So we'll get the January 22nd meeting started. And first item on the agenda is agenda changes. Anyone have any agenda changes? Okay. Public comments for non-agenda items.
They're all upstairs.
They're all upstairs, not down here. Might get pretty noisy when they start.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay. So that leaves the bulk of our meeting for architectural and streetscape design standards.
So this is the first draft. This has been remarkably difficult for me. I need to dedicate time to, but B, to actually do it. Every time I sit down and try to write, even with Maggie and Rolfe's draft materials, because the two of them helped by giving me some...
How many did you Carter?
No, 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 actually it didn't. It made it easier. But I'll show you in Google Street View. Every time I sit down to write, I think about a property in town that doesn't, either doesn't meet the standard I'm writing, or does, but, you know, somebody across the street doesn't. So it's just, it's a difficult thing to sort of, for me anyways, to sort of just say, oh, just, you know, tweak these other couple towns and make it like Heinsberg and it'll be good. So anyways, that's, those are excuses by which to say, you had discussed 11 different sort of design standard focus areas, and you are looking at some draft language for just the first two. So I will keep plugging along. Rolfe actually did quite a bit of work on a couple of others later on. So it's not like there isn't some fodder, but trying to take them stepwise. So anyways, the first one is related to setbacks. And we had discussed the possibility of modifying our setback allowances so that buildings could be closer to the road, closer to each other. And that maybe more importantly, we would think about the concept of a minimum setback rather than a maximum. So right now, sorry, strike, reverse that. A maximum setback rather than just a minimum. So right now, from the road, we say you have to be, at least in the Village Growth Area Districts, 10 feet, at least 10 feet back from the right-of-way. So that means we're trying to keep people a little bit away, allow some room in that right-of-way for things to happen or change. But we don't say how, we don't limit how far back from the road the building can be. So if you can envision some existing development on Route 116, for example, the AutoMotion Building, which is in the Quonset Hut, and the Village Car Sales, which is next to it in a newer building, are both set back a pretty good distance from the road. AutoMotion, a very long distance from the road. Whereas the Parkside Cafe and Kenny Drugs are brought up much closer to the road. And so in some of these towns that we've looked at with design standards and form-based code, they still require some sort of minimum, but they also set a maximum where buildings have to sort of present themselves to the street and can't be set back as far as, say, AutoMotion is, or even the Village Car Company. So in this first design standard, it's about setbacks and how do we deal with those items? And so there's some language or some bullets to talk about anyways with regard to this build-to-line concept. And then there's some language about the zero setback allowance. So again, current minimum front yard setback is 10 feet. My suggestion is to consider a maximum front yard setback of 40 feet. And we can take a look at some properties that have that, that level of separation. Obviously, you've got to, you've got to allow some flexibility. It can't be, you know, all buildings must be 12 feet from the edge of right-of-way. Well, I suppose you could require that, but that seems a bit strict.
You mentioned, I can't, actually, I can't imagine how difficult it must have been to try to, try to pull it all together. But you mentioned, you know, sort of thinking of a number and then seeing buildings in town that were, you know, different across the street, even more different. But that doesn't really matter, I mean, what's existing now.
True, everything that exists today, the way zoning works, everything that exists before you change a set of regulations is essentially grandfathered.
But it's still interesting, it's going to be interesting to...
They can become, they would become pre-existing, non-complying structures with regard to those setbacks, which can make putting an addition on or making changes to them a little bit more laborious of a review process. There is a process by which you can go to the DRB and say, I have a pre-existing, non-compliant structure, I need to make a change, you know, and that can still happen. So yeah, it would principally be aimed at new development. And, but I think it's important whenever we talk about design standards, and especially form-based code light, that we, that we let our current built environment inform what we're doing, you know, for new development. Not to say that it all has to look the same as. In fact, there are some things we probably want to avoid repeating. But I think it's important to calibrate what our design standards are going to be for new development based on what existing development that we think works and looks nice and functions properly. Because not every town has the same reg. So Braderboro, for example, has a different build-to-line than Jericho, which has a different build-to-line than Westford, which are the three that were in the Dropbox, if you took a look at some of the source material for this. So we need a Heinsberg one. And I think it'll probably vary, if you even want to go in this direction of build-to-lines, it'll vary by district. Probably most significantly, the Village Northwest District. We have a vision for those buildings along 116 to be set back a long ways away from 116. And actually, not to really present themselves to that streetscape the way the Parkside Cafe does, or the way this building does to 116. So we'll need to differentiate by district and potentially by streets. The Village Northeast District, where NRG is located. Right now, in our current design standards, that there's a Northern Gateway Design Standard in our current regs, also says keep the buildings away. And I'm suggesting maybe we get rid of that. I think that that's not as critical on that side of 116 as it is on the west side of 116, given the way the official map has come to be drafted and the like. So in any case, maybe it would be instructive to put some imagery up on the screen?
Yeah.
Or do you want to chat about it first?
No, let's look at stuff.
Okay, I found that really helpful, both to do Street View and also just to look from the sky and take measurements. The measurements may be the more important part for this conversation. When we talk about the second design standard of permeability, I think the, actually seeing what the streetscapes look like is quite helpful. So let's just start here, which is a newer slice of development, where Kenny Drugs and the Parkside Cafe is.
Okay, turn the lights up.
Is there a way to kill this front row at least?
We can definitely kill the front row. We can kill them all, but then it gets rather...
That's good.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
So Google hasn't updated their labeling yet. Still shown as the Bristol Bakery and Cafe, but this is the Parkside Cafe.
They don't have the development at the western end of town.
Oh, really?
On the streetscape. If you drive on 116, coming in from the south, there's nothing there where there is now very much something.
I think the streetscape view for 116 is from 2017. And when you move on to the side streets, it's from 2011. So it's pretty old.
Well, even on 116, you don't see
Right.
the development on the south end of town.
So here, in this area of relatively newish development, so these buildings were built to be close to 116, to be part of that built streetscape. And if we measure the distances from the front face of Kenny Drugs, at least at its maximum extent, to, and knowing where the edge of the right-of-way is is a little difficult, but it's generally about the edge of the sidewalk, I believe. Yeah.
18 feet?
18 feet, looks like I didn't measure that quite perpendicular. So maybe closer to 16 feet or so. If we measure from the Parkside Cafe, see if we can zoom in a little bit more here.
From the porch, the covered porch?
Yep, from the covered porch to, similarly to sort of the edge of the sidewalk, where I believe the edge of right-of-way is, about 12 feet. So these buildings are, you know, outside of the minimum setback. They meet the minimum setback. But they're quite, they're quite close. They're almost at that. Let's move down the street a bit so you can get a sense of what some of the other buildings are distance-wise.
And the minimum setback is 10 feet, you said?
Yep, they have to be at least 10 feet away from the edge of right-of-way. So what was the old police station here is similar to Kenny Drugs and Parkside Cafe. Our own new police station, we can measure that one. Yep, backed up a little bit further.
That's the porch.
This is, yeah, the nearest, not sort of the main face of the building, but the nearest extension of it. Again, it's a little tough to judge the edge of right-of-way. I believe since the sidewalk jogs, it's somewhere in this vicinity here. About 20 feet?
To the sidewalk or to the road?
About 20 feet to the edge of the right-of-way, which is where we measure our setbacks from in this, in this area.
Which is just green space.
Right, the right-of-way edge is sort of in here.
And that's a comfortable one as you're walking down the sidewalk.
As you pass by there.
It feels a lot safer than Bristol Bakery.
Further up, yeah.
If we look at the Jarrow Body Shop, it's set back quite a bit more. Again, roughing, roughing out where the edge of right-of-way is. Closer to 45 feet. And as you walk, there's no sidewalk here, but I imagine most of you have probably walked in front of Jarrow's at one time or another. You know, it gives you some sense of how that building is not, it doesn't feel like it's part of the streetscape. What feels like part of the streetscape is their parking in front of it and, you know, the interesting stuff that you get to see pull in there. That's, you know, going to be welded or fixed or modified. I guess we could take a look at the building we're sitting in at the moment. Actually, maybe the Public House would be another interesting one.
Or even the one just, just, I'm sorry.
Just north of that.
The one to the north, the house that had the windows kind of removed. That one right there. You know, it's the storage. I'm curious about that one.
John Lyman's house?
Yeah. I mean, that one and the old building across the street that's close to, you know, those are kind of the older buildings that sat long there.
Yep.
And it's kind of fun to see.
And John's house is, you know, has a, yeah, and it has an interesting roof line. And let's measure that distance.
But the former police station too, because I think they kept the footprint.
They all are pretty...
They changed the profile of the building. The building got taller.
So 20, 22 feet?
Yep.
Which, did you want to do this old fire station? Is that what you meant or?
No, if you go back, you know the building that's in such rough shape?
Oh, this one, this one, sure. Yeah, the Jarrow property that really needs to have something happen to it.
You're getting kind of a warped look at it.
You're not looking at the face.
But it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's a few feet difference.
This is a great tool, Alex.
That's right, yeah. Can you share that with us? Is that a tool we can have on our computers?
Oh, yeah, so this is just, I'm in Google, I'm in Google Maps.
Really?
So I just go online, go to Google Maps, and then if you right-click with your mouse, this option to measure distance pops up. Well, this one does, yep.
Very cool. God, I did it in a much more painstaking way, I want you to know. Remember I was telling you guys all the lengths of all these streets? I mean, I was like...
I was looking at the scale down, you know, down at the bottom corner there, the right-hand corner, it says 20 feet and shows how, and I'm measuring that and putting it on the screen.
Yeah, so you don't need fancy GIS to do this. You can do it right in Google Maps. So about 12 feet?
Yeah.
10 to 12 feet?
Okay, no.
For that building?
So that's one of the closer ones.
Yep. Similar to the Parkside Cafe. If we come down the street to another, well, actually, let's try the Public House. Because I...
Do the front porch.
This was a redevelopment project, much beloved in the community, right? Is not right on the road. And again, I'm doing my best at guessing the edge of right-of-way, which I think is somewhere in here. About 35 feet?
Yeah.
And this is why I was suggesting 40. A, because I forget, one of those other three towns used 40. But B, because as I looked at these buildings, it felt like once, once you, like 40 was in the realm of what was, we were seeing in our existing village. And once you got past that, it's hard to keep that building really intimately involved with the street.
Yeah.
Because things are going to want to happen in front of it, like landscaping or barking and the like.
I kept thinking of the point that one of the consultants made about edge, about having, paying attention to the edge of things. And walking along, not out next to the street, but along a building edge away from the street.
Right, and having that sense of enclosure and interaction.
So much of the existing stuff now, on the east side, is closer than the west side. The stuff down in the core part of the village that's been there for 100 years.
Yep.
Very different between the two sides of 116, right there.
Really different, yeah.
Yeah.
And really different from everything north of that stretch. That stretch between Charlotte Road and Silver Street is a unique segment.
Right, that's very defined.
Don't you think that has to do with the topography?
Yes.
Why did, why did the buildings, not that we need to understand it, but why did the buildings on the west end up further back than the ones on the north?
Because of the topography, because you go up onto a knoll, that's what I think.
Yeah, but you have to go up on the knoll to be that far back?
You think that people just wanted to have the view?
Right, how could you? Because that knoll was there.
That's what I think, John, I don't know.
Well, when you look at the old historic pictures, the road just sort of broadens out and goes up over the knoll and also, as it does now, stay down low, right in front of Lampman's and so forth.
Right, because it's flat there.
We can move down the, down the street and...
But then when you get, as you go south...
As you go south, it's flat again.
After the, yeah.
After the knoll.
When you get to the Brick House, or even the house that Catherine bought.
Right, right, before that.
Yeah.
And yet they're all set back.
What's the town hall?
So Barbara wanted me to measure the United Church, so let me do that. It's clearly a, a different kind of situation there, since it's so far back and a very different kind of building. Uh, let's see here. So about, about 88 feet.
Wow, really?
Yep.
Oh, 88, 90 feet.
To the federal church.
Yep, the town hall here is much closer from the edge of the front porch anyways. Again, trying to get the edge of the right-of-way. Somewhere in the 20 to 25 feet realm.
How wide is this building? Can you measure that?
Sure.
Corner to corner?
42 feet.
Well, there you go. See, I don't need to measure, Rolfe knows.
Is that a guess?
I don't know.
It is a guess, alright.
Just shows you the power of a...
Whoa, you're pretty...
42.75!
Sorry, dude, you're off. No points.
You missed that. I get another grape.
So if we move, if we move down to the area that we were, that John was bringing up, as soon as Google refreshes itself here. And let me zoom out a little bit so it's easier to see. You can see that, yeah, that west side in here, these buildings are set a very good distance away. These buildings on the east side are not as far, but are still relatively far when compared to some of the buildings that we were looking at north of Charlotte Road, including this building.
And they are more or less lined up, the ones on the other side.
Almost to the Silver Street intersection. See how it's closer there?
Yeah.
Somebody probably built one house and then they all just stayed right in line with the one that got bitten.
Yeah, I mean, they're not perfectly aligned, so...
No, we're pretty close.
Well, the ones on the east side.
Catherine's house is here.
Yeah.
The next property down is in the same line as is this one. But then the old, this is the old Weiner house, right? Is set back a bit further. And then this house follows that. And then...
But that's, yeah, this one was built...
That's where it flattens out though, at the Weiner house.
Right, when you kept talking about the knoll, I was thinking the Weiner house.
You mean where the academy is?
And thinking, there's, there's no knoll at the Weiner house.
Where was the academy?
No, by there, it's flat.
Yeah.
But the white one...
Move up to the, move up to the library, the old library.
Yeah, that's, that's the very top of the knoll.
So the academy was right behind where the, where the library was, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was the real knoll.
That was the...
When there were no, when there were no trees, when you see a photograph of that, it's raised up above...
It's sitting on top of a hill. It feels to me, when I walk on the east side, much tighter and closer as you approach, like from Conan Rath's office, the next one down where Joe Fallon had an office. From then on, it seems like much tighter, closer to the street.
Yep.
But they're all pretty much in a line.
Yeah.
They are pretty much in a line.
The fronts of those buildings are pretty much in a line. And I think it's the road that's moved.
Yeah.
It has.
And the other thing that, if this is me, is the vegetation. The trees along there between the sidewalk and the road makes it feel more enclosed, more like an edge. There's two edges, you're behind one edge essentially, when you're walking on the sidewalk.
Of course, the road was like this wide.
Yeah, originally.
Originally. Have you ever seen the old picture?
It might have been wider now.
Nothing, you know?
Right.
By plane today.
So what's the distance between the east side?
The difference?
Like 10? No, on the, yeah, on the east side?
On the east side? So if we measure from the Conan Rath office, maybe I should zoom in one here to get a little better. And it's, yeah, the right-of-way edge, where the heck is the right-of-way edge? Out here.
Where that car is.
So 25?
25 feet.
Maybe a bit more, 25, 28 feet?
27.66.
I hate, I hate the front yard parking along there, I just hate it.
Yeah, I don't, it's not especially attractive.
No.
Well, it's definitely varies more on the west side than on this side.
Right.
And the Weiner house is probably, at least south of Charlotte Road. That's probably, at least if you look at architectural styles, that's the oldest house on that section.
Really?
I think so, maybe the red brick one preceded it, but...
That could be.
That one looks so, the brick one looks so solid, so well taken care of. It's deceptive as to how old it is.
But like the Weiner house, you know, it's Greek Revival, it's probably 1840s?
Well, at least the southern, yeah, the southern part of it. I think the northern part are...
Whereas that little one that has the L that comes closer to the street.
Rob Bass's house, Rob Bass's house, right there.
Probably 1880.
Now, how wide is that? That, that's an interesting house when you look at the face of that. I'll give you another grape if you hit it.
The width of that house?
Yeah.
The width of that house, looking at it from there.
I don't know.
I think it's a little more, I think it's like 25 feet.
Alright, we'll see what Google says.
I'll bet it's in there.
Your future in grapes depend on it at the time.
23.
Hot dog. There you go, cadass. See, the older you get, the wiser you get.
Hopefully. You should, right?
No, you won.
That's why I'm throwing one at you.
So I think John said something that I think is worth talking about with regard to build-to-lines. So we like to try to accommodate everything that needs to happen in the public sphere within the right-of-way or, you know, just outside the right-of-way. And that means the road, that means on-street parking, if there's going to be any. That means curbing and any stormwater collection. And that means a greenbelt and street trees. That can be hard to do, but what we try to, we try to make that happen. John mentioned that when he walks from Good Times up to Lampman's, you have a, you, there's a canopy. It's a, it's a pleasant walk.
You come into a zone that belongs to walkers.
Right.
Essentially.
And so I think, I think the tree, in my, in my experience, the trees have an awful lot to do with that. And so if, if that sidewalk were closer to the road and the trees were still there, I think you would, I think I would still have that experience. But it's worth pointing out that that, that distance or that gap between the road and that sidewalk is substantial.
Yeah.
So you can see it pretty readily here. You know, that's not a typical design. And this on the other side of the road is also not a typical design because we didn't put in any greenbelt or street trees, which was unfortunate. But this one in particular is, the sidewalk is set back quite a distance. So as you're thinking about build-to-lines, you want to just decide, you know, what, what do you want it to look and feel like? And do you want to force buildings to be, you know, that much closer to the road? Or do you want them, you know, to be able to be further back and allow for this kind of arrangement? I don't think this is the way things are done in this day and age, but we have it in our village. And just be aware of it when you decide whether you want to have a different vision and how far back buildings ought to be to accommodate.
Does it make a difference if you're on 116 or if you're in a... Development?
In a development.
Yeah, I think it probably does.
What, 5, 6,000 cars going by on 116?
Yeah.
Yep.
Compared to your neighborhood street, right?
I would think that'd make a...
Then you could come a lot closer, I would think, in the neighborhood.
I mean, someone's talked about they don't feel safe walking down 116 when they're up close to 116.
Right, right.
Really, Bob, in front of, in front of Parkside Cafe? That's not, you don't feel as comfortable there?
No, no.
That's not...
Well, Parkside, I mean, there's the puffer of the, of the cars that are parked there alone.
Yeah, but the pavement comes right close in.
I mean, I wonder how safe people are going to feel on the east side, on the new sidewalk, which I haven't even been on yet.
I know.
Which gets stuff thrown all over it when the plows go past. Because you can see the remnants of what they've blown off onto the sidewalk.
I think that Parkside there, you know, as you get to the corner, the greenbelt is kind of present. So there, the sidewalk is a little more separate from the road. Further back, I guess you've at least got parked cars next to you. But there's no question that that stretch south of Lampman's on the east side of 116, where the sidewalk is, is a really nice experience.
Yeah.
It's probably not an intensely commercial experience, but... And then if you were to park cars along that stretch of 116, like we've done in some other places, and did it with parallel parking rather than perpendicular parking. You know, that would, I think, even more enhance that experience. Because there are several places there, Conan Rath, they pull in perpendicular, so you've got dirt coming almost to the sidewalk.
Yep.
It's, it's a pleasant stretch of street and worth trying to emulate in some way.
The other difference, of course, is these, this vegetation here at the Parkside is very new compared to
Yeah.
the other part of the village, which has grown up and really has created a space of its, you know, defined...
But probably if you were to redo this, you'd probably give it a little more breathing room, I think.
Back it up a little?
We're making this up that if buildings are closer to the street, traffic tends to slow down?
Correct.
Supposed to.
Supposed to, okay.
It's going to slow down there anyway because of the, of the light, the intersection.
The intersection.
But it's a, but it is a visual cue, um, for, for drivers that, um, yeah, that, that they're in an enclosed, a more enclosed space.
Right.
I have several friends, Barb, who are landscape architects, you know? And back like in the seventies, I remember them showing me some study where people drove down a road or a street. And one was devoid of trees and had a particular speed limit that you were supposed to obey. And the street character was somewhat the same, not a lot of buildings. And then the other one had like an alleys of trees on both sides. And the study concluded that with the trees there, um, people drove like twelve miles an hour slower. Uh, and it was mostly cause you were like feeling, you know, I guess, you know, like the trees.
Those edges.
Right there, if I fly off the road, which I'm prone to do.
Those edges came in.
You were gone, or something, you know, it's, it's kind of like when, when you drive down the street and there are people on the edge there, you, you get a little nervous, they might jump out or something.
Well, even, even, you know, the, the fog lines that are just, it's just paint. But when, when they're painted to, what's the, is it eight feet?
Nine feet lanes is what we're trying to accomplish.
People slow down, I mean, yeah. And it's just paint.
Yeah.
That's effective.
So here's a newish residential neighborhood, this is Thistle Hill. Um, you know, a hundred percent residential, pretty much, uh, mostly single-family homes, a couple of duplexes in there. Um.
But their sidewalk, there's no green space between the sidewalk and the street.
Yeah.
Again, it's that.
Correct, in this.
Uncomfortable feeling.
In this prop, in this project, uh, the street trees were planted on the inside of the sidewalk, as you can see here. Instead of between the sidewalk and, and the street.
Now, who planted those? The town?
The developer.
No, the developer installed all of this infrastructure, the road, the sidewalks, the trees, the houses.
So the vegetation was part of the requirement?
Yes. Yep, we have a street tree requirement in our subdivision regs that says you gotta plant street trees at least every forty feet. Uh, and in this project, they, they did that with some accommodations, you know, here and there.
No matter where the sidewalk is.
Yeah, our, our, our regs don't stipulate that the street trees need to be, you know, within the greenbelt between the sidewalk and the road. Uh, just that they have to, that they ha- there have to be street trees.
You had mentioned that sometimes we didn't succeed in developing along the road with vegetation. And I thought that meant the town didn't put money into landscaping and vegetation within the right of way.
Yeah, so the example I was giving you, actually there are two, um, it's embarrassing when you're, when, when the town doesn't really follow the same uh, intention that developers have to. Uh, so, but there are reasons, of course. Here's Mechanicsville Road, right, and we installed a, a very expensive sidewalk that went from the post office all the way up to the high school and across C V U Road out to Ballard's to connect to the library. And as you all know, this is a great, you know, place to, a great place to be safe and walk, and lots of people use it, but.
You're trapped between a wall.
Built right up to the road and there's no, there's no substantial greenbelt and there's certainly no street trees. Um, so it's a pretty barren.
And there's a wall.
Pedestrian experience, well, for a portion there, yep. And, you know, this was because of cost constraints, this was probably more because of, um, difficulties in acquiring the necessary easements from, from landowners who were, um, giving us, giving us a hard time, especially in this particular stretch. Um.
This went on for twenty-six years plus or something.
Right, right, at some, at one point, at some point, you just wanna, you just gotta get the project done. But anyways, that's an example of a sidewalk project.
Do I mean?
That doesn't have, uh, that didn't have street trees, and then this sidewalk project, um, that connected Charlotte Road to the school on the west side of one sixteen, we did, we did some, we did multiple things right here. A, we got a sidewalk and lots of state funding for it. Uh, B, we actually got some on-street parking that you can see striped here. Um, but again, we sort of fell down when it came to uh, street trees. There, I don't know that we planted any, um, as a part of this project. And so, um, it, it's, it will never have the feel of the sidewalk that you were just talking about on the, on the east side of one sixteen. Unless we can figure out ways to plant trees, but when you don't plan for those trees, it's hard to make them appear at a later date.
Well, there aren't too many spots, I mean, there's some.
You've got a spot there that, what, five feet wide beyond the sidewalk to the road, right there?
Here, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I know trees need water and.
This is another swath that potentially could happen. I guess another, I, I shouldn't blame the town entirely, on one sixteen, another reason why we had trouble doing it is that uh, the agency of transportation at the state level is basically just starts with no.
Right.
And then you have to fight, fight, fight.
Right.
And that was the case with, um.
It's their road.
These elms that, uh, were eventually planted here in Memorial Park. That was a huge battle, and if it weren't for Renee, our town administrator, they never would've happened.
All more reason to take over.
Exactly, yes, it's very, it is a, it is a reason, because then we get to make those decisions. In any case, I'm not sure why I went off on that tangent, but, um, all of this is by way of giving you some idea of what we currently look like and what are, are built, how our buildings are set back from one sixteen, as well as some of our side roads, like Dennis mentioned. Um, and to give you a sense of whether you wanna consider introducing a new requirement that says uh, you can't be any further back than this in order to force buildings to be uh, up front and not uh, set way back uh, like the, like these ones uh, uh, in the central part of one sixteen.
Although, although the, the front yard parking eliminates, I mean, that, the front.
Yes.
People can't do that anymore, so.
They can't have front yard, they can't have parking in the front.
Right.
Correct. That won't necessarily stop someone from planning a site that, um, with a building set, you know, quite a distance back from the road, but it, it disincentivizes it because it sort of becomes wasted space.
I think one other thing, I mean, when I thought about this, and I, and we sort of do it a little bit now, I think, in our existing zoning regulations. First of all, I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I sort of do this work, so to speak. And there's nothing like maximum and minimum setbacks to make you feel like an incredible dummy, you know? Cause it's like, everything is kind of, and I'm always getting confused. But I also think that, um, you know, or is it worth contemplating, I guess? Um, we've talked about this a little bit before, there are different classifications of streets in our community. Uh, clearly, one sixteen is one kind of road.
Yep.
And even one sixteen, if you start up by uh, the C V U Road and you go all the way to the end of it. Uh, the requirements that we have currently on one sixteen differ, depending on where you are. And then what has been built also differs. And we tend to do this setback stuff by zoning district within the village growth area. And I'm wondering whether another way of thinking about it might be by street. And by the character of the street that we're trying to create. And again, as you say, Alex, I think it's good to not be too rigid. I mean, maybe it was all the pastors on that east side of the street where all the churches were, they just said, hey, you're gonna build here and that's all there is to it, and if you don't, you go to hell, you know?
Right.
But clearly, there needs to be some flexibility in that, but I'm just wondering if we looked at, say, for example, uh, if you can imagine a new residential district or a new part of uh, Haystack. You know, there, there are some streets proposed in the, in the back portion of that, or the western portion of that. Where you could imagine the setback being different, the whole configuration of the street, you know, from the street and what the street is, you know, maybe a fairly slender two-lane road with maybe parking on one side in some places, and then a sidewalk, uh, or parking on one side, a little bit of a tree belt. A sidewalk and then some distance to the front of a person's porch, you know? That's sort of one character trait. Mike, uh, what's his name? A lot of the landscape architects are pretty savvy on.
Well, Mike Buscher was suggesting that kind of cross section.
And then you get to something that's maybe a little busier, where there's a bunch of townhouses and maybe some two or three-story buildings that house the elderly and, you know, you can imagine that, the street might be a little bit wider. But the setbacks in that area might be a little different than they were in the first example, I note. Then you get to something that might be like, uh, you know, where Parkside is, you know? And maybe it's a little too close, but uh, it abouts one sixteen, or even in other places, it's, it's, you know, gonna about other streets. That's a, another circumstance or condition. So, I guess part of me was wondering whether it was worth considering, rather than sort of go by district, not that there aren't similarities from district to district, we go by street type.
Right.
And we say, okay.
Four different street types.
This is kind of like how we make this street, and this is roughly how we say, this is what the setback or build-to line or maximum setback, um, is, and this is how we want that street configured.
So it's more than just the setback line, it's the whole cross-section of.
Yeah, maybe.
Type A, type B, type C, whatever.
Yeah.
Type of street.
But all there is in the village are one and two, class one and two, so are we talking?
Yeah, I don't even know.
Are, are we talking width of the street maybe, or?
Well, you're talking about widths of the street, you're talking about the tree belt, the sidewalk.
I mean, how to, how to, how to distinguish types of, of street. If it's by class, I think we only have class one and two in the village, I would assume.
No, what we have is, we have uh, state highway, that's one sixteen, and then we have class two town roads. Um, and I, we do have class three.
In the village, though?
Yeah, Commerce Street is a class three road, um.
Which would be, say, for example, a much different kind of street in terms of its makeup and character. Than say, a street that currently serves, um, Thistle Hill. Or, what's the other, uh, I'm sorry, what's the other?
Creekside.
Creekside. Uh, those are clearly sort of residential, I guess, in character, and they presumably would have different quality requirements, dimensional requirements than perhaps Commerce Street, you know, we don't, you know, it's easy to see in a bigger city where you've got main commercial ways and ours are still defining themselves, I think, in many respects.
So if that, if we did it that way, Rolf, if we, if we talked about, you know, street type A, B, C, D. Um, obviously, some streets don't exist yet, they will, they will be built, so they will, they will be new, part of new development. So, in that sense, we would, we would tell, in the regulations, we would tell a developer, uh, pick one? Or, or we would tell the D R B or the zoning administrator, pick the closest one and apply this, these setbacks to it?
Yep.
And, and then our existing streets, we would, we would indicate which, which category they are closest to.
Yep, yep.
So that when somebody wanted to redevelop, uh, well, let's say Michael Sorsy wanted to develop the second lot that he has next to Darkstar that's vacant, uh, we would be able to say, well, you're on a street type B and that means when you put that new building in, it's gotta be this, this close to the road.
Right.
Okay.
Or if he redeveloped the lot that he owned, for example, same, same kind of.
Right.
Regulations then would apply, but it, it comes down to how do we distinguish those categories? Those three or four categories of roads? What makes the difference? Is it just?
Well, and, and how different?
Well, it's part of the use.
Traffic volumes?
Yeah, use. But how different would they be? The one thing we're talking about, just to get back to it, is, is the concept of a build-to line, right? A lot of our zoning today, these design standards could, are contemplating introducing this as a new concept.
Yep.
Um, how different would the build-to line be for street A, B, C, D?
So, so.
It may not be that different, you know?
I could see it being very different on certain sections of one sixteen.
One could be residential only, one could be, you know, Thistle.
Mixed.
A, a mixed residential, like, um, you know, back by Kenny, Kenny's, yeah. Um, commercial residential.
That brings up the other thing, Maggie, in terms of what's the use that we're asking to be a certain distance more or less back? Is it residential? Is it mixed? Is it straight commercial? Is it kind of like light industrial? What, what use do we want a certain distance within?
So the idea behind form-based codes is that, and we're not doing a form-based code, but we're, we're learning from the ones that have done it, is that you, you think less about the use and more about the, the structure, more about the form. And you don't worry so much about whether it's gonna be a bakery in that building, or a leather shop, or, uh, you know, uh, Chase Manhattan, you know, corporate office, um.
But you do think about it, whether it's gonna be a house, a residence, or one of those other uses that you just listed.
Yeah, I suppose.
I mean, I'm not sure that we wanna push residences on busy streets right close up to the street as opposed to a business with light kind of exposure, hey, here I am, you're driving past, here's my windows.
Yep. Well, again, the idea with a build-to line is you are, it's a regulation, you are forcing them to come closer to the street.
Right.
Um, and, you know, to some extent, if there's an area where the road is busy enough that you're not sure you want them to be close to the street, then maybe you don't need to force that issue. Maybe you don't need a build-to line there, uh, unless you're trying to create a, you know, a consistent streetscape, um. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a sort of a tough nut to crack, but I, I do think that the, as far as the street types, it's, I like Rolf's concept, it's an interesting concept, and I haven't seen that in any of the regs that we've been looking at. Um, everything is very much more district-oriented.
Yeah.
Um, with a differentiation, differentiation between principal and secondary streets. Particularly for corner lots, so that you know how to deal with them.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that is one, uh, lesson that, uh, was explained at a, a workshop, um, in Williston uh, late last year, we had a pedestrian expert come and give a talk, and we did a little walkabout. And, uh, the Williston planner was talking about how, uh, development near Finney Crossing, um, sort of across from Shaw's on, on Route Two. Um, they are, they are designed, they have buildings that are already being built in there, the new Healthy Living, one of the new Healthy Livers is going in there, and they talked about, uh, the fact that it's on a corner and which street does it have to sort of present itself to? And so, um, it sounds, it sounded like they made a mistake in that, uh, they, they're sort of forcing it to present itself to Route Two. But all of the actual pedestrian traffic is gonna be on the side road, the new development road, cause everybody who lives in that neighborhood is gonna be walking down that road and coming into Healthy Living that way, and that's where the parking lot is. And so they're, you know, uh, the consultant was saying, be careful about that and make sure that you, that you have um, your streetscapes, uh, designed for the street that matters, uh, and not just for the street that happens to be the one with more traffic passing by cause, you know, again, we're trying to design with pedestrians in mind.
Yeah.
Um, in any case, yeah, we, we could try to differentiate into several different street types, um.
There's a little book, I think I, uh, that wasn't my idea, by the way. But there's a little book, uh, it's called, you know, it's by the New Urbanists or something like that, and it's not a thick book. And it talks about these, the idea of the transect, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Where any town or any community sort of is layered.
Yeah.
Not necessarily by use, but just sort of, hey, they gradually get less intense.
Right.
As you get to the fringes.
Starts in the core and moves out to the most rural.
Streets that serve those less intense areas are of a particular character, and those streets gradually, until you get to the main. Their affair all differ in character and design traits, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Might be interesting, you know, not to belabor this topic, but, um, like, Mike Buscher has sort of looked at this pretty, um, thoroughly.
He, he presented some nice cross-sections.
Be interesting to talk to him about and see whether maybe it's something worth presenting to us.
Yeah, and I, I remember him talking about, um, be careful that we're not requiring to, to, you know, a road wider than we really need. Um, especially in, in smaller residential neighborhoods, yeah, that, that could be, that could be helpful. I asked again about the, the parking lot between.
I asked again about the, the parking lot between DPT and let's say Blue Cottage. That's probably at minimum standard. I was coming out of there today and a woman was coming in, and she makes this big wide turn, if I hadn't stopped, I probably wouldn't be here tonight. So.
That happens all the time.
So, so right, right here, this is the parking lot that Barbara's talking about, it's, it's in the middle of this development, it serves Kenny Drugs and Blue Cottage and D Physical Therapy.
Kaylee's Way.
And.
That turn right there, somewhere you turn in.
And, and yeah, this is a, this is a twenty-four foot wide um, separation between the parking spaces on each side. So, uh, which is what our regulations require. And the parking spaces are the, you know, traditional uh, dimensions, eighteen by nine, I think, or twenty by nine. Yeah, it was designed to meet all of those uh, requirements, but yes, Marie has uh, frequently commented on how she feels.
People drive it.
That it's cramped in there, and uh.
The first section, when you get up to Kenny Drug, I almost never drive in there unless there's no cars, because it is so darn cramped. It's like, I just feel like I might not be able to get out of there once I get in. But what Barbara's talking about, where you go from the parking lot onto Kaylee's Way. That's very bad, and I don't, I'm not smart enough to tell you what it is, I just know it's bad, like she said.
Well, all of these things, this was a Mike Buscher design, um, all of, all of these designs were, were done with walking, walkers in mind. So instead of having thirty to forty foot curb cuts so that cars can easily get past each other. They are narrowed, um, so that it's pedestrians have a smaller gap to have cars. It just means you have to drive along more carefully.
Must be careful, and, and you have to look in your rear views, you have to look all around, and.
If you see Barb or Marie, you better get the law.
I'm really careful in there, it makes me nervous.
I think.
And then people go stop either down below.
There is way more drivers than lawyers.
Yep.
But hopefully someday that will change.
Well, and I think in this particular parking area, um, the fact that this, this, this feels like one parking lot. And yet there's, there's traffic circulation that comes right through the middle of it, so that complicates things a bit. Um, and you do have all this pedestrian movements happening, although Dennis is right, I think most of the conflict is car to car.
I mean, in the DRB process, we hammered the applicants to make parking as small as they can.
Yeah.
Right.
They did.
Well, in this, in this case, I think, I think it's right on, I, I, I've never heard anyone say that they can't find a place to park there. What I hear a lot of times from Maria is, it's, it's hard to get my car into the parking space that's available, cause it feels.
Don't drive a truck in there.
Right.
No, but people do. And that's another.
I do if there's nobody there.
Extended cabs.
I only like along the side there by Blue Cottage.
The problem is, we're conditioned by what's across the street. That's where we're free and easy, we can go wherever the heck we please.
And gravel.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Well, that's it, it's, it's not a Walmart parking lot, you can just maybe tour. You know, go fast, you know, there's plenty of, plenty of spots and um, no, I think that it, this forces people to, to slow down, to look for. But they're not. Pedestrians. I'm sure there are exceptions, Barbara, but this is not a Walmart parking lot.
More than they would if the parking lot looked like this. If it looked like mobile, that.
Oh, they'd go even faster.
But a lot of people don't know that, Maggie.
Yeah. I'm afraid people drive poorly everywhere, so.
Yes, that's true.
Getting back to your standards though.
Yeah.
So the streetscape conversation sort of grew out of this idea of should we have a build to line? And how does the build to line vary over different parts of the village? So I, you know, I can look into, and maybe Rolf can help me, and Mike Buscher could be roped in, um, looking at uh, different street type. Sort of cross-sections, cause I think that speaks to a bigger question than just a build to line.
But Rolf also brought up another point, is if you have a multi-story building. Parking's in the back. But then you have residents that they drive up to their house to park. That's gonna be different, ain't gonna be on the same street.
Right.
A house and a multi-family.
I think that's, that would be of a different character. Than say, for example, you know, a single family.
Right, but so you couldn't go by street then?
Well.
Within the street, it would change.
Right, I mean.
From multi-family buildings and then it's single-family houses on the same street.
I mean, you wouldn't be able to pull up and park if you only had ten feet. It would be hard, I would think.
Oh, other than.
Unless you had a garage.
No, if you had a garage, but I mean, people still wanna park in their driveway.
In their driveway.
Well, and it might vary from one side of the street to another, I mean, a little bit like the old village, you know?
Well, like Roger Cohen's, I think you can park in front, but you can also park in the back.
Right, you can, yeah, you can go on the side and park in the back at Rogers.
Unless there's a change of use, in which case they won't be able to park in the front anymore.
Right.
Right?
Remember Dennis, that in, in our current design standards, we, we try to get uh, single-family homes, not just single-family homes, but especially those. To place the garages further back from the front facade of the house, so that you can have a house that is closer to the road with a garage that is behind it. That's what our regulations expect, we've varied that through the P U D process in a lot of projects, this hill being one of them, but this is. This is the Farmall Drive neighborhood, and you can see here, um, that's, that scenario where this house, for example, is. Uh, again, it's hard to know the exact edge of right of way, but I think, and I think, I think we grabbed the sidewalk on this one, so. This house is about twenty feet from the edge of right of way, where its garage is set back another eight to ten feet from that. Which gives you enough room to have parking in the garage and in front of the garage. Um, while still having the house be relatively close to the street.
But on that same street, if you had a multi-story building, are you saying you'd like it to be the same as the residence and be twenty feet?
I'm not sure. Well, I think, I think uh, if you had a build to line, it would have to meet that, so if these residences were built at twenty feet and the build to line is forty feet. Then the developer made the choice to bring the houses closer, and then the multi-family, it's, it would be their choice to decide whether they also wanted that to be.
Forty or twenty.
Forty or twenty, it would be up to them to decide that.
Unless we made a distinction between a multi-family building.
True, I, I don't, I don't think you'd wanna make the distinction based on the use, but maybe the massing and height of the building, height especially. Um, you know, once you get to a, a two to three-story building, maybe you do wanna bring it back a little bit further. Or, or not, I mean, again.
Although I've been in neighborhoods in the Midwest that have been there for a long time, and the, and they're mixed individual houses. And multi-family brick stone apartment buildings, and they're all close to the street.
Yeah, I think it really depends.
They put their outdoor space behind the houses.
Yep, I think it depends on the, on the scale of the building, a duplex or even a fourplex building is not that different from a single-family home. Um, a twenty-five unit apartment building is very different than a single-family home. Um, or a senior housing, you know, fifty-unit senior housing building that's three stories tall or has underbuilding parking. So yeah, we might wanna differentiate based on those, as, those matters as well. Remember, there's only so much detail we can get down into the weeds on this on, you know, if we're gonna have a different setback and build to line for. You know, three or four or five different types of buildings, um, I'm gonna push back on that, cause I, 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 I don't see other towns doing that, and it just seems overly complicated.
So are all the Creekside houses set back the same amount?
Um, they're, they're pretty close, there, there's some variation, but they're, they're, they're pretty close. That developer's vision was to have uh, everybody synced up. And have everyone's sort of front, fo- face of the building on, on the same plane, that's what he was shooting for.
What is the actual right of way like on Tredberg Way?
I think it's a sixty-foot wide right of way.
So from the inside of the sidewalk to the other inside of the sidewalk, that's sixty?
Let me measure it, I think it's from the outside to outside.
Or outside, rather.
Yeah.
Is that typically how it's done, Alex?
Actually, that's.
Or a street right of way?
Um, our regs talk about a minimum of a fifty-foot right of way, and in some developments, we see sixty feet, and others, it's just the fifty feet. It looks like here, it might be just the fifty feet, yeah.
Okay.
One pattern I saw in looking at the neighborhoods in Burlington. Near where the new uh. Co-op market is, between there and Route Seven, the houses were clo- all close to the street. And all their outdoor space was collected together in the back, so, and, and there was a lot of vegetation, a lot of big trees and all, so. That really had an impact on what it's like to drive in that neighborhood. With these big trees and close uh, houses on either side. You really felt that you were going through a space that, that was public. I didn't go into the backyards, but looking from above, you could imagine that that must seem very different. Back there, uh, compared to the front. And people had porches, and they had nice things in their front yard, vegetation, landscaping. It's not like they ignored their front yard, but.
That's how it is.
That, right.
I mean, they'll, houses are up close to the street and they have a backyard.
Right, right.
I think the whole, that whole area is just like that.
Which makes sense.
Soon as you pass by the edge of town, then you get forty-acre front yards. With, with someone cutting it on a riding lawnmower every day.
So let me ask you another question that's in this bullet list. For this historic section of. Between Charlotte Road and Silver Street, right here. Our current regulations have an interesting setback wrinkle in them that uh, that says, you know, here's, here's the setbacks. Uh, minimum setbacks in our table. But if you have, uh, we will require a larger setback if, if the houses on either side of you are set, are, are that much further back. And it's a recognition that in this area here between um. Uh, the Twice Is Nice Shop and, and down here where Silver Street comes in, that these houses are set back so much further from the road. So this, this, this regulation basically says, we don't want you to be up near the road, we won't, we don't wanna let you ever do that. And there's a limit, uh, so it's not like you're forced to be hundreds of feet away from the road, I think, I think it says in no case shall this require a setback of more than. Oh, I forget the number, let me look it up, but I'm just curious uh, whether you feel like we oughta keep that, or ditch it?
It's interesting, cause I was just looking at um, Rob Bass's house, where it looks like there had been an. Where it looks like there had been the original house and then an addition. Which is forward of um, the original house, which is in line with all the others there.
Don't we have regulations, it's really hard to tear down any of them houses anyways?
Uh, just requires conditional use review, so um, as long as the teardown is not gonna have an adverse impact on. The adjoining property or uh, you know, those sorts of things. There, there really isn't a specific teardown regulation in our, um, in our regs, just the fact that it requires a public hearing and um, goes through that, that process.
And there's not a requirement to build on essentially the same footprint? As the original building that you tore down?
No.
No?
No.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what happens in a lot of communities with regard to that, you're talking about, say something burned. And somebody was gonna build something new there. To replace that structure. I mean, like in Burlington, say for example, you're in, almost any street you have this. Where you have to take the average of the setback of the houses, the two houses that adjoin you. And that's your build to line.
That's interesting.
So what that does is that preserves the character of the street, say for example, or the feeling of the street. You can build a contemporary house, but.
Yeah.
Your house is still sort of in some relationship to your neighbors.
That edge is hell.
I mean, I always remember coming to Heinsberg and being an obnoxious little twit. And going to the first hearing when they were gonna build the new Catholic church.
Yep.
And I went to that hearing, and they were gonna tear down, you know, the old church. And then they were gonna build a new church in the back. And uh, I said something to the effect that I didn't think that was a good idea. And that what if you got married, and you came out onto the front steps and you were a hundred feet away from the road, what kind of pleasure did you derive from that? And I thought that the poor priest or whatever was, I wasn't even in the church, but if I was, I'd have been excommunicated on the spot, I think. But you know, that, that is sort of the greatest example in our community of, we used to have a church at front of the street.
Right.
Had nice steps. And we just kinda pushed it way back, and now we, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that, but it's worth looking at. Replacement situations and making sure that we, at least in the historic part of our town, that we preserve that character by. Perhaps making some kind of rule that requires you to, to play with the existing stuff, you know?
Well, and that's what this, that's what this existing standard does.
I like that, I.
Although it's interesting that the last sentence says that um, you know, you gotta be somewhat uh, compatible with your surrounding neighbors. However, no event is the setback, is a setback greater than fifty feet from the edge of right of way required.
Where would that put the building?
Yeah, good, good question.
If we look at that same side.
Cause the Village Car Place, it's so far back, that house that got torn down was out.
Was much closer to the road, yeah.
Even more with the one, other one that, that Rolf was asking about, on the cor- on the corner, I think. But that house got torn down.
So if I'm getting the right of way edge correct, which I'm, I'm always a little unclear on where the right of way is. The Weiner House looks to be about seventy, seventy-five feet away from the edge of right of way right now.
Yeah.
So what this current regulation says is, if the Weiner House were to be torn down, and they're gonna build something new there, they'd have to go through conditional use to tear it down. But when they went to build something new.
They couldn't.
This regulation says you gotta, um, you've gotta look at the neighboring structures. And be set back at least as far from one sixteen as the neighbor, uh, neighboring principal structures, but. But no more than fifty feet from the edge of right of way, so in the, in the Weiner case, it could actually, it could come, it could come twenty-five feet closer. Uh, to the road, which in this case probably would be fine.
Right, cause the other house to the north of it is a little more forward.
Is, is about that, yeah. Anyways, my question was, uh, because we're talking about build to lines, I was thinking, do you wanna get rid of this section and allow things to come up closer to the road in this historic section? And I'm getting the answer is no.
I like staying with what's there, or like what Rolf said, yeah, I like that, could you repeat that?
Well, no, it's not that complicated, actually, a lot of it uh, says, hey. If you were to rebuild or build a new building or something, you have to take the average of the two houses that adjoin you. And that's your setback.
And what this says.
And there's usually a five-foot leeway.
What, what this says, our existing regs say, uh, you look at those two houses and you um, you set your, you set yourself back. At least as far as the, the, the neighboring structure with the shortest setback, so. If, if the one to one side of you is slightly closer to the road, and one is slightly back, you can be back as um. You have, you have to be the, you have to be the one that's the uh, shortest. At least as far as the sh- the one with the shortest setback, so you can get as close as your neighbor is, but no closer, as opposed to averaging it, that's.
If you go back to the, the aerial view. Let's say we were gonna put a replacement building between uh, the parish hall and the house to the south, where the, where the church was, was torn down. Where would be the setback line there? Following Rolf's rule, you could come as close as the parish house.
Right.
Well, if you were to do it, say for example, say, say you. Well, if you were to do it, say, for example, say, say you tore the vestry down and then you wanted to rebuild it.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the.
The average situation would have you dealing with uh Saint Jude's set all the way back.
Oh, the next adjacent neighbor.
Deal with the parish house, well.
Well, depends a little bit on what you classify as the neighbor.
Is that two, two buildings on one lot, the church and the parish house?
Is that all one lot?
Or those separate lots?
I think those are two separate lots.
You do? Okay.
I think.
I I'm not sure.
Yeah. Well, this is worth examining, though.
That's an unusual one.
Cause I think the just averaging of two structures, one on either side of you. Maybe not always will breed the result that you want.
Yeah, I I think the current reg that we have sort of does the trick, we don't need to monkey with it.
But didn't the church build back there because they needed a bigger building?
Oh, I think so, yeah, yeah, right, there was reasons to do that.
No, there, I I didn't mean to suggest there weren't reasons, they wanted to, you know, up their game.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they have.
They did.
It it also, I mean, not to go back in time, but it also very easily could have been much further forward on the site and still have been as big a building as it is today. With garden and green space in front, not unlike the United Church and parking behind.
But then there's, then there's the whole question architecturally, is which side is the front of the building?
Right now.
Yeah, I mean, and the way they solve that is they have an entrance that goes through the building.
Right.
You can enter on either side.
But I still think of it.
Church is on.
I still think of it as the one sixteen side is the front.
When you come out from the wedding, you walk out and you're in a parking.
That's how I see it.
You're in a parking.
But you're right, you can't enter that, but to me, that's like a back entrance, cause the kitchen's right there.
Yeah.
The back one, if you go in, go to the right, there's the kitchen, to me, that's like a back entrance. But you're right, you can see through, anyway.
And and they do use it that way.
Yes, yeah.
They park on both sides and enter from both sides.
Yeah.
So can I get your, get your, uh you just answered a question I posed in the draft, so thank you for that. My other question was, this area of the village, so from uh CBU corners down to uh Patrick Brook. Right now, this is called our northern gateway, our current regs has this, has design standards for this, this section of uh of the village of one sixteen. And they apply equally on both sides of one sixteen. And my my thought is that through your discussions about the official map and the desire to have that linear green on the west side of one sixteen. But not on the east side, that it might be time to differentiate that and not have a design standard that applies equally on each side, but maybe. Differentiate and allow buildings to get closer to one sixteen in the village northeast district.
Yeah, but the east side, the way the property is, you're gonna have to be space.
Only uh as you get closer to that knoll, so where the arrow is, you've got that, you've got that knoll, but once you come over that knoll.
Yeah, but then you got a stream there, wetlands.
Here, look, take a look up on screen, if I zoom in, uh there's, you can see the Riggs House is here, the old Riggs House, and here's NRG. The knoll is is right here where that vegetation is. This is an old, there used to be a barn here, right?
Big barn.
And basically from this point down to Riggs Road, you could easily have. Structures, you know, in that corridor closer, closer to the road.
No, wait, I'm sorry.
There's no sidewalk there yet, but the way our our design standards read right now, you, we we require that they be setback further from the road. Not hundreds of feet, I think that the standard is um fifty feet, actually, so it's not all that much.
On the east side?
On both sides, yeah. Um anyways, my question was, is it time to treat them differently and recognize that we're doing something very different on the west side than we are on the east?
I would think so, yeah.
Yes.
How easy is it for you to go to Rutland, Vermont on the screen?
Oh, yeah, that's easy, hold on. I thought you were gonna ask me how easy was it for, I'm like, I can draw it all.
If you start now, Alex.
Right, would you mind leaving the meeting and go to.
Got some nice pastry there.
You wanna send me a a field trip?
Pause when you get there, Alex.
No, I mean, I was on the village steering committee when we were fussing around with this whole, you know, those two north uh zones got created. And I've been sort of, pardon me, but I've been fixated on these kind of roadside green spaces, these linear spaces.
Oh, the one in Rutland downtown, yeah.
And uh I just thought it'd be fun to look, to see how the two different sides of the street are treated in that particular instance. You know, and this is mostly, was mostly a residential neighborhood, I would say, it's on Route seven. Um and it's very close to the intersection, well, you're seeing those two green things, but it's the small, narrow, green one right there.
Yeah, the linear one.
Is uh, is sort of one of my favorite little places. And I think uh maybe Heinsberg could have one of these. But insofar as what I imagine, the west side of one sixteen perhaps being like north of Patrick.
More like that, right there.
You see here, I mean.
Main Street Park.
Me and I appreciate it. You know, this is that little green, okay, you can see, I mean, much like we talked about in our place, the, there's a sidewalk.
Yep.
Um and it kinda meanders through here and there's lots of trees.
Yes.
The houses are all back here, they're not all houses anymore.
Off of another street.
No, they front this street.
Right, off of.
Front this little laneway, yes, yeah, you're right. On the other side, you know, there's an art gallery, these are mostly large residential structures, they're obviously much closer to the street. I'm not saying, hey, this is what we're gonna make in Heinsberg, but it's a pretty interesting. It means that these people back here live, you know, a little bit like Roger Cohn's office and something like that, that setback is different.
And it is like lawyer offices.
Very, I mean, this is a terrible road, this is a four lane highway, you know, right through the middle of town. But you're backing on this street or even walking in this and and then these, they do elevate a little bit, it goes up a little bit, so. And actually, these setbacks are, you know, reasonably decent. But anyway.
That is a nice spot.
When, even when you're moving past on South Main Street.
Could you measure that, Alex?
You notice, you are aware of that long linear park.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lime, New Hampshire also has Claremont, New Hampshire, they have these long linear greens that just kinda buffer.
Yep.
The action of the road, which, you know.
What do you think of Butler Farms?
Yeah, now that's a perfect example of creating a space like that and then ruining it by putting a water retention pond in it, there with a big fence around it, you know?
You can't go in there.
And then on the other side, everything's close to the road.
It's people's backyard, kind of.
Starting, kind of.
Starting to be close to the road.
They never, they never had a good vision for that green space before they were required to put a big stormwater pond in the middle of it. I remember when it first went in, I was just like.
There was no stormwater pond.
What do they do with that green space? And they, they were doing nothing with it, um it's, they're almost lucky they had it in a way, cause the stormwater rules, you know, forced them to do something and they had room to do it because of it, but.
The pond seems like it's often full, cause that'd be a great park, you know? Of course, it's out in the suburbs, so everybody's got their own park and their own backyard.
Everyone has place sets in their backyard.
When you look at the size of the lots.
But the years that have gone by have made that development look better than it did.
Well, it's still got a long ways to go.
For sure.
At first, it looked like it was just out in the middle of the field.
So it's eighty feet, Maggie, that's the width of the of the park, green, green width anyways, it's wider than that, you know, with the um with that, that. South Main Street um access road in there.
There's two South Main Streets there.
So Ralph, are you referring to from Riggs Road down to Patrick Brook?
No, I was really referring from CBU Road to Patrick Brook.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that was, you know, whether.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, I didn't know where you.
So we talked about a hundred feet there.
For width, yep.
So a different street that doesn't have so much traffic on it, the houses or businesses are up to that street, not the front drive.
Right, right.
And I used to work a lot in Rutland years ago and there were offices in some of those buildings along in there and I would park in through. You know, it was really easy to park in there, it was very nice.
I don't think too many of them are houses anymore.
No, it was like law offices, that's.
Fire department.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Interesting.
So our official map reflects what you've been, you know, needling us to to do there, Ralph, that that does show that linear green. But what I wanted to show you is that the dimensions, of course, are vastly different, that green was about um eighty feet of green in width by four hundred feet. In length, and the area that you're talking, that we show on the official map is.
Probably quarter of a mile anyway.
Yeah, it's uh extremely long, uh at least to Patrick Brook, don't click on Frost Beer Works, let it run here. Yeah, that's two thousand, two thousand feet.
Close to half a mile.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's gonna have a different feel to it than uh, it's gonna have a much more long strung out feel to it than that.
But it angulates, cause you go up.
You're gonna come up and then you're gonna see down.
Correct.
Through that part.
Yeah.
But we're certainly not looking to create something similar on the east side of one sixteen.
No.
So it probably makes, what you're saying, you're agreeing, it makes sense to to.
Vary.
Vary it up.
Right.
I think so.
Okay.
So we've got build two lines for different road categories, but we've al- also got. Differences on either side of different road categories. Possible, I mean, we could vary both those things.
There's gotta be a way for the, to construct it such that the the zoning district helps inform the street types in some way.
Yeah, yeah.
Since the village northwest is different from the village northeast and so on and so forth, not sure exactly how to do that procedurally, but. Must be possible. So the second design standard, uh well, sorry, we didn't talk about zero setback allowances. The idea behind this is right now, we require uh buildings to be at least ten feet back from the edge of right of way. Um and the idea was that rather than forcing folks to ask for waivers through the PUD process where they can ask for a zero setback. To actually stipulate that um if it's an open air porch or an entrance portico. Um or some other extension of the building that complements the streetscape, like uh covered dining or or something like that. That you can, you can get yourself right up to the edge of the right of way. So what do you, what do you think of that?
To residents as well as commercial, I mean, you're talking about an outdoor dining space, that's, that's a restaurant, right?
Uh certainly, that that example, covered outdoor dining is a restaurant, but um.
Do do you?
Yeah, the way, the way I wrote it was, uh it would be anyone and everyone.
Matter what use it was.
Right, as long as it um met the, you know, fit the bill.
But it wouldn't be the wall of the building, it would be like a porch or.
Some, some sort of add-on or.
Yeah, yeah, something.
Yeah, okay.
So is that along one sixteen?
Yeah.
The one thing that made Butler Farms, I'm not trying to pick on Butler Farms, that made it really look ugly was you saw all the backs of the houses.
Right. Okay.
So if you made a green space up through one sixteen and then another road.
Mm-hmm, yeah, frontage road, basically.
That's what's different about Butler Farms, their road's on the other side.
Right, 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 and in Rutland, there's that road.
Definitely don't wanna do that.
Right, what Butler Farms did, you don't wanna do that.
So we, so we would need to have that secondary road like in Rutland to serve the fronts of the buildings on that road.
Right.
Yes.
Which could be residential buildings or commercial buildings.
So they would have to be designed to face that road.
And they would be designed to face that road and not turn their back, I mean, that would be their access.
Right.
Through that secondary road. Which which is what that overall area has been shown as, that.
Right.
Our our suggestions that the village steering committee came up with had a secondary road. And I think that's still in the plans.
Maggie just had a picture of them and it looks like that. Although I have to admit, I'm really confused, it said the, the complete set, but I thought the new. Um new plans were up on the site and I I feel like I'm looking at the older plans.
For what are we talking about?
Haystack.
Haystack.
Um, yeah, so the third set of plans came in last week and I.
Oh, so they're not.
Don't know if those are up on the Dropbox site yet.
No, they're not, okay.
Um, okay, so uh an example of a zero setback for both residential and non-residential, for those of you that went to for the Virgin site visit. Um is some of what we saw in Virgens, do you remember how there were certain houses where the stoops were like right on the edge of the sidewalk? Um and I I remember commenting like, how do they plow sidewalks here if the people's entryways are like right on the edge of them?
Careful.
Yeah, I I think from a, from a public works standpoint, there will be some pushback to, you know, allowing things to be that close. Um so it might be worth thinking about um, thinking about that, some language to address that.
In Virgens, we were seeing telephone poles, power poles.
Right.
In the paved area that's continuous with the street.
At least on one street, yeah, yeah, that was awkward.
How do they handle that?
People have to maintain their own.
That's a good question, in Virgens, I don't know if the city takes care of sidewalk powering or not, that's, that's a good point. Okay, so John's, John's question was a good one, would the zero setback allowance apply to all structures or just to um? Non-residential structures? What do you think, uh if if we were to allow?
Maybe zero setback doesn't happen on certain classes of roads, but it does happen on other classes of roads.
Yeah, possibly, if we, if we adopt this sort of street, typical street uh idea with A, B, C, D, E streets, you could differentiate based on that.
Let's not do E.
Okay, just A, B, C, D.
Yeah, not, maybe not even D.
Are you imagining that um, when you think about a zero setback, are you? Are you talking about like from the actual right of way, or are you talking about, say, to a hard surface sidewalk? If you, you know, a little like Kinney's and.
Yeah, I'm thinking from the right of way, but it, but um.
That, that I see happening pretty rarely.
Yeah, right to the right of way.
I'm not sure we're that kind of town.
Yeah.
Where where I see it, it's like an old building that was there a long time and it's still there.
But not creating it, no.
I mean, think of the Red Barn House that's on one sixteen, after you go past the curve and you pass the school. And then there's this barn shaped building that is, that is right close to the road.
Yep.
Yeah, and the idea with this, the way I drafted it is, it's not for the, it's not for the main face of the building, it's for an entryway. Um so a porch, um a portico, um something like that. But I'm happy to just drop it as well, cause if it's, if it feels like it's not really comfortable in this community, um that makes sense to me.
I think we should try, that's my vote.
Okay.
Come, come back down to.
I like, I like the idea of, of, you know, in inviting porches, maybe in in structures where they might not otherwise. Want to include them.
Right.
Well, how does it, like, if you zero in on the Bristol Bakery again for just a second, and we imagine.
They still have a good setback.
Well, there's no parking there because of the intersection stuff, but if you. You know, if you imagine, I mean, I could easily see, I mean, they have a nice spot there on the south side, actually, they sit outside now.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, you can imagine other circumstances where south is to the right. And, you know, you could see the sidewalk right adjoining the porch, getting a little wider, right up to the building, you know?
And it becomes a public space, really.
It's really just a nice little terrace, you put umbrellas out there and you sit out there, despite the traffic that's not that far away.
Where does the green space go?
Well, the green space goes between, you know, you can even see, Dennis, the sidewalk, you know. It might not, the sidewalk might not be that this close to the road, in other words, this all goes this way a little bit. And maybe the sidewalk's closer to the building, and I'm talking about in an area like this, there might be some trees in it too, you know? But this space is buffered from the road by something that maybe is wider than this, you know? This is sort of a, a sort of wonderfully underutilized little green space, isn't it?
Section.
You know, it's a great example of a place where nothing happened and yet. You know, it's a great example of, it's a place where nothing happened, and yet.
The plants die.
Yeah, they had to, they replaced them.
Yeah.
Last year. Supposed to be from the south.
I can remember when I talked to, uh, uh, folks at, at the Public House, and they liked the fact that their customers could watch traffic on that porch on the south side of the Public House, that they were actually pleased that they're, that they had that view of the road, watching traffic is the way they put it.
Yeah, when we go to the Bristol Bakery, my kids like to sit near the windows.
In the windows, cause it's busy there.
I'm sorry, get out.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you.
Wait.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, Dan.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you so much.
Planning Commission, Snowflake Road.
Here, Dan, we brought you a piece of cake. Get on, man.
Well, now I feel bad.
No, 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 no.
I don't feel bad.
It's your birthday.
Have a birthday.
We need a break anyway.
Well, thank you guys so much.
Need some cake for some other people at home maybe, or you think there's something else there?
Yeah, well, yeah, there's cupcakes at the house.
All right, well, do you want a piece or?
Oh, yes.
I'm not, I don't have to go that quickly.
That's what I'm asking.
A healthy portion.
All right, then, how about we give you like.
Give him a quarter.
If we, if we leave three quarters for ourselves.
Yeah, that's funny.
Make sure you leave them out. All right, then. I don't really have anything to put in.
This is really minimal, right. I'll just eat it here.
Be careful with consumption of that cake, it's the first cake I've made in forty-four years, so.
Maybe you want more?
Oh, you want some more?
Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you so much, though, I appreciate it.
Thanks for giving us, us, it used to have a cake.
Oh, yeah, well.
Remember where you got the plate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll bring it back. Well, thank you everybody so much.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Good morning. Uh, all right, so Maggie, it's a something.
Eight thirty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could start to wrap up. I mean, I think we've.
I think you've covered number one setbacks.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't gotten to permeability. Do you wanna start that or do you wanna wait?
Maybe give us a quick once-over, and then rather than have discussion at that point, we just let it sit. What do you think?
Once-over? Oh, for the permeability?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take, let's take a look at it.
So, so you can all, you can all read, it's there. Maggie helped draft some of this based on, um, other towns that she cited, and, um, some of this hearkens back to our existing village area design standards, but basically there are four bullets, and the first bullet is related to windows, uh, and it's basically saying, road-facing facades of principal structures are gonna have them, windows that is, uh, on all stories, and it minimizes how much blank wall you can have. Um, and then it also goes on to require that for, uh, retail establishments and restaurants, uh, the windows actually have to be functional, you have to be able to see through them as opposed to.
Not Kenny's.
Right, so, um, and, and I wanted to bring up, um, uh, an email that I got, uh, last week from my former colleague, Peter Urb, who's still on the scene, uh, so this is up on screen, and he was make, he, he was, he knew we were working on this stuff and he felt the same way, that if, if we're gonna have a requirement for windows, we ought to have them be real windows. So here are the, here are the buildings that, that don't do that, but are still part of the fabric of our village, and so it's worth thinking about. Kenny's has windows that are not see-through, and, and they told us that when they went through the review process, that they were going to have display products inside and they needed to have, you know, part of the window opaque. Lampman's?
You'd like to have permeable windows.
Right.
Right, and now they're blacked out.
And now they've got shelves again.
Same, same idea as Kenny's, uh, different style of window. The closing in of the porch, I assume that porch was there prior and they, uh, and they just boxed it in and turned it into interior space.
Right.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
No, it was an open porch.
I think so, yeah, it's, it's relatively, it's relatively far back. Um, architecturally speaking, it's not, it, that wasn't a great choice. I mean, functionally, it was a great choice, but you, you look at the building and aesthetically, it just seems like you took a historic building and, and kinda did something not, yeah, it doesn't work so well. Um, anyways, so this first bullet is about windows and being able to see through them. Um, Maggie, you didn't, you didn't include, uh, specific to retail establishments and restaurants, so next time, let's talk about how widely you want the windows to be able to be seen. Also, uh, I realized after reading Peter's message that we, we really ought to make this specific to the first floor of these buildings. I don't think we need to.
Yeah.
Compel people to have that on upper stories. Um, the next bullet item is regarding, um, entryways, uh, and, and this, this, uh, standard talks about, uh, requiring that, that, um, non-residential and mixed-use and multifamily structures have a prominent entryway facing the street. Our, we, we currently require this in our regs, this is not new. Um, but what is new is the, is the dimensional standards and how much of the facade that entryway needs to occupy, uh, in order for it not to look like it was just pasted on the building, but is actually structurally part of the building. Uh, and it goes into a little bit of detail, uh, using some terms that we would need to define, like gallery, arcade, I don't think those are in the, you know, common, common speak. Uh, so that's the second bullet. The third bullet is, uh, specific to porches and entryways for single-family and two-family residential structures, so that's, that entryway, second bullet, is, doesn't deal with single-family homes and duplexes. This next one does, and says, yeah, everybody's gotta have a porch or a portico. That's kinda con, I think that's kinda controversial, maybe, but it's in there, uh, to think about. I think Maggie, when you suggested in your draft, you put a big question mark, should this be all buildings?
I'm a fan of porches.
I know you are. Um, so let's talk about that next time. Um, and then the last one, uh, is, uh, similar to our existing garage setback requirement, um, with a bunch more language, because as I thought about underbuilding parking and the like, I tried to, I, I just felt like it needed more fleshing out. I'm not sure this is the best language to flesh it out, but it was my attempt. So, those are the four bullets under permeability, and again, the idea behind these is, um, to, to allow, um, to allow people to see into, through the streetscape and into buildings, and so you feel like you're sort of part of what's going on, uh, in that place. In the way that we really, I think people found attractive in Virgens, where you were on the street, you're able to look through, uh, you know, outdoor dining, display windows.
As opposed to just walking alongside a monolithic wall.
Right, as opposed to the site visit we did, uh, in Finney Crossing, uh, in Williston, where they had mixed-use buildings that, um, that, that just seemed like monolithic structures, uh, with not a lot of, you, you didn't really know what was going on inside any of them, even though there were some businesses there.
They're in a straight line though.
They definitely were a straight line on the same plane, no deviation.
No parks.
Yeah. So, uh, look at that, think about it, we can talk about it more next time.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alex.
The only, not to get into a talk about, but the only thing I noticed that jumped out at me, when you think of some of the fronts of buildings that might be twenty-five feet wide, and you say you gotta have thirty percent of, it's gotta be at least thirty percent, it ends up being seven feet wide and six feet deep. I'm not sure we wanna do that. I think we might want to put a dimension, it has to be at least this dimension in width.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm not sure how to.
Puzzle, puzzle on what, how do you think that?
Right, how do you say that?
You know what I'm talking about. It might wanna be both, it might wanna be percentage with a not less than.
Right.
Actual dimension.
Yeah, that would work.
Right. But I will tell you that, uh, it, it can be a little hard, it is hard to write these things, because some buildings have entryways that are not facing the road.
Well, we talked about that earlier.
They're on the side.
Yeah, it's on a corner.
A corner door.
And how do you decide which is the principal intro, which, which is the, which is the entrance that people are actually gonna use as opposed to just facing the street?
Does it make sense? Do you guys like, um, Longhorn, stuff like that, there's no houses around anywhere?
Terrible, you park in the back.
You park in the back, but you have to walk out front on a busy.
Yeah, it's awful.
I don't know what they were trying to accomplish there.
I don't know either. I wonder the Longhorn Steakhouse?
Wasn't that building built for some other use initially?
I don't think so.
Cause nobody walks on the sidewalk.
You're walking down a village, you're walking on a.
I think what happened is similar to the, the other mistake I mentioned with the New Healthy Living in Williston, is that their regulations required there to be like an entryway facing the street, and they picked the wrong street. They picked the street that is, gets all the traffic, but nobody actually walks on, instead of having it, the entryway maybe turned to the side.
So I'm not the only one that thinks that.
No, I totally agree with you.
Personally, I don't think it's a big deal that you have to walk around the building, get a little exercise before you eat your twenty-ounce steak, but, um.
It's so cold and windy out there most of the time.
But, but I.
That is true, yeah.
I don't know that it accomplishes what they were seeking to, to figure out.
On the other street.
Yeah.
And also, to cross that intersection, so if, say you keep walking on the sidewalk and don't go in the steakhouse, to cross from there to the other side where Chili's is, just about kills you. It, they do not have a long enough light.
Right.
It's really aw, scary.
And that exit of that parking lot is like four lanes wide of traffic, right, so.
And it's, I've seen.
Maybe more.
It's scary.
There's another one to the right, you can cut off to the right-hand side to turn into the shopping area.
That's right.
So there's five lanes.
Yes. So it's dangerous, so we don't, yeah.
We'll have none of that in Heinsberg.
We don't have an interstate interchange right next to us, so thankfully, we will not ever have that.
Not yet, they're looking at it.
Not here, they're not.
I'm kidding, Alex, for God's sake.
It's nice when you get it, I mean, it's not so bad once you get into Maple Tree Place, but out there, it's not so nice.
Well, let's move on to minutes, people. That would be the eighth-page document.
Right.
Kate, thank you, I gotta say, I gotta say, Kate, thank you for this, it was just a great, I mean, just being able to re, review it before, um, ah, I'm melting.
So Kate, I had a couple of corrections. Um, Rolf arrived at the select board portion a little after it started, but in the beginning of the minute, minutes, you have him as absent.
Ah.
You should move him to present, even if you have to parenthetically say arrives, you know, arrives a bit late.
Yeah.
Yeah, she notes when he does arrive.
But, but he wasn't absent.
He wasn't.
No, he wasn't.
That's the implication you get from the, the first page.
You were actually there when you came.
Yeah, she talked to me and I think she decided I was mentally absent.
Um, and then there's, uh, the bottom of page one, there's an RGH that needs a closed parentheses, just the abbreviation. Um, on page three, the second paragraph from the top.
Oh.
It says, John Kay said in regards to the decision to resend a letter they had sent earlier to the DRB. I think you need to put in regarding Hanaford there, so it's clear that that conversation was about the Hanaford project and not the official map. That part can get a little confusing, um, actually, the conversation was a little confusing, so that's probably.
That was confusing at the, at the moment.
Right. And then on page four, the fourth paragraph down, it starts with Alex W clarified the record with regard to John Kay, may have been a mistake. Um, I, I would recommend just deleting the may have been a mistake, cause I think it reads, what I said was, um, I may have, I, I was mistaken in what I, what I said previously, so either say that or just delete the make, had to make a mistake, and I think the rest of the paragraph explains it.
I was ready to accept that mistake, whatever, whatever you were talking about.
Anything else?
Then it continues to the planning commission meeting, actually.
Was Joe I present there?
He was not.
Fifty percent, not in the audio.
It says members present.
Yep. He's gone, sorry about that. Okay, if there's nothing else, no other additions or deletions, anyone have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Want to do the minutes first, or?
I'm sorry.
Apparently not.
I'm sorry. You know where my, my mind is.
I have no idea, that's the scary part. Motion to accept the minutes.
Having an adverse impact, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, second on that?
Oh, all right then.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Goodness, that was more painful than it needed to be. Okay, other business.
One thing, I think someone else had something, but just remember that your next meeting is, uh, your public hearing on the allocation, uh, scoring system. Uh, so that's February twelfth, it's, I think, three weeks away, cause there's five Wednesdays in January. I, we'll see. I have yet to really start up the, the front porch forum, you know, conversation, just a, a dry legal notice, I'll do that tomorrow, start that tomorrow, but we'll do that and we'll get back to this permeability stuff and anything else I can draft between now and then.
Okay. So I will be gone.
You'll be gone, okay.
Until into March.
Good to know.
Return to the, I won't probably be here for the first meeting in March, be the second.
And know that, um, we did discuss the allocation scoring concept with the DRB last night, uh, and they had some good comments and critiques, and, and they all have it on their docket to look at it some more, and if they wanna get anything in writing, they'll either get it to Dennis or me and we'll, we'll bring it up at the hearing. Uh, good comments there.
Great. Can I just comment on the, the letter from the Conservation Commission? I, I think it was incredibly well done, with information provided to us that is extremely helpful. So I, I'm, I'm very supportive of what they've suggested.
And to clarify, this was a letter that we discussed at the last meeting only very briefly, that I then emailed you all, which was a letter from the Conservation Commission to the DRB regarding the Haystack Crossing project and some comments about how it could be improved.
Yep. And John Yoots?
Yeah, I just wanted to alert everybody to this book, Strong Towns. Um, there's a lot of information in here. You, you do have to make a translation between the size of the towns that he's talking about and what we have here in, in Heinsberg, but I, I think that, that can be done. You can find good suggestions, good experience, uh, with, making your, uh, your town prosperous. Uh, the, the man who wrote this book is the president of the Small Town Company. It's actually his business. Uh, small, Strong Towns, uh, is the name of his business. Uh, so it's, it's not from the government side of things only. He talks about that side of what gets done in towns, but he also talks about the private side of what makes towns strong. So I don't think the library has a copy of this yet, but I plan to, when I'm finished reading it, uh, make a donation and give this to the, to the library if they don't already have one. Uh, so check it out, it's got, it's got some good suggestions in it, I think.
Anything else? Okay. Well, that's it, meeting's over. Thanks, everybody.